Independent School District 721 to order. All rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janelle, please note that all board members are present. And we have one open forum, and I just had the paperwork and filed it, of course. Naomi Simon, talking about the hazardous crossing on County Road 37 and Lexington Avenue, I do believe it is. So if you want to come forward, thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Ditburner. My name is Naomi Simon. I am the mother of three children who will be sixth graders this fall at the middle school. We live at Lexington Avenue North and County Road 37. That is less than one mile from the middle school, so we would not qualify for transportation according to distance. However, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the district's hazardous crossing policy and apply for transportation according to that policy. I brought some papers with me tonight, Policy 707, which is the district's transportation policy. If you would follow along with me on that, I think that will help me make my case before you this evening. The general statement of policy as stated is that it is the policy of the school district to provide for the transportation of students in a manner that will protect their health, welfare, and safety. And I am definitely here tonight for the health, welfare, and safety of my children. If you would turn to page two of this document, please. Section four, eligibility. Part B states that the school district may, in its discretion, provide transportation to any student to and from school at the expense of the school district outlined within the guidelines for walkers and hazardous crossings. At the bottom of that same page, hazardous crossing guidelines. Number two, minor arterial streets. County Road 37 falls under that classification as a minor arterial street, and that helps us in our work because everything has been laid out clearly for us in this policy. On the next page, if you follow along with me where it says type of area, the minor arterial streets, which is County Road 37. It says busing for students in grades six through 12 who have to cross a minor arterial street that meets at least four of the following five criteria. I measured personally, County Road 37 is greater than 44 feet where my children would be crossing at County Road 37 and Lexington. So we do meet requirement for number one. We do not meet the requirement for number two. There is a walkway along County Road 37 there. We do meet the requirement for number three. The posted speed limit on County Road 37 is 35 miles per hour. There are no stoplights. The nearest stop signs would be at Columbus Avenue. My children would be crossing there to get back onto the side of the street where the middle school is. The nearest stoplight is all the way up at Holiday. So there are no stop signs or stoplights or marked crosswalks anywhere in between those two points on County Road 37. And a number five, the average daily traffic volume greater than 5,000 vehicles. We do meet that requirement as well. I met with Ken Andich of the city last month. If you flip to the very back of the document you have, he provided me with the most recent traffic study that was completed in 2009. The intersection in question where we live at Lexington Avenue and County Road 37, in 2009, the daily traffic volume was 6,400 vehicles per day. That number would, of course, be expected to be slightly higher because our population is slightly higher now. So I do believe that we meet the minimum four requirements to qualify for hazardous crossing guidelines. And the action I ask for you tonight is to provide busing transportation for my students to middle school, please.
I have a couple statements first. I have a question, actually, first, and then I'm going to make a statement. Going back to, I don't know, the third page where you laid out the five points. I just want clarification on number two. You say there's no sidewalks or walkways on either side of the street, which there is. So you don't, that one doesn't qualify for you.
That one does not qualify, correct.
But my question is, is there a sidewalk on? Because I do believe you live on the south side of 37.
Correct.
Is there a sidewalk there?
It ends at Pershing. And you need to cross to the north side of the street.
Then you'd have to cross there.
There, yes. And I can tell you from personal experience, that hill is icy. I would not want my student, my children, walking on the shoulder of the street there. I want them on a walkway.
Okay. I just want, because I knew, I know where you're living.
Mm-hmm.
And so, but I couldn't remember exactly where the sidewalk, if it was on your side or on the next side.
Yeah, they need to cross to get to the walkway.
And I knew that. Okay, so they have to cross 37 to get on the sidewalk.
Go down.
And then have to cross it again to get back to the middle school.
Correct.
Correct.
And I'm not concerned about crossing at Columbus. That's a marked crosswalk. It is a stop sign.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is at Lexington.
Okay, fair enough. I, I don't think we can make a motion at this point in time. I think what we have to do is, I'd ask Mr. Ditburner to take this and give this to Craig and so that he can figure out how transportation can, this can get figured out, and then they would be in contact with you.
Right, the normal channel would be to go to our transportation director, and he'll take your information and make a decision from there.
Okay.
Yep, and we'll follow up on this.
All right, thank you.
But you know what? I appreciate you bringing this, and I appreciate you doing the homework on it. This is great, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more open forums, so we will move to the agenda. I have a special presentation for archery and trap shooting by Mr. Skogarbo.
Oh, good evening. We're here today to, tonight to recognize a couple of our student athletes. There are students that had a lot of success this year in their club programs. The first one is a sophomore, Kelly Schrader. She's in archery and had a very successful season. I'll state a couple of her accomplishments. She was the overall state female champion in the state of Minnesota. She competed in the national competition in Louisville in May and placed 21st. She also qualified then for the world competition, which was in Madison, Wisconsin in July, and she placed seventh in that competition. So she does a, obviously is very talented. And I just had a couple of questions here for you. I thought that might be, it might help you guys out. How often, Kelly, tell the board here, how often do you actually practice?
I practice two days a week with the team, like as a whole, in the gym. But on my own, I practice almost every day.
Okay, and so you're only a sophomore? What are your goals for next year?
I would hope to get first in all the tournaments this year because last year I didn't get first in one of them.
Well, very good. Board, any questions for Kelly?
Is the competition for boys and girls the same, or do you have a different type of?
Um, no, we're in different categories. Like, it's taken down by high school, middle school, elementary, and then split up between boys and girls.
Do they use a different, whatever it is you use to shoot?
A different bow? No, everyone's the same.
It's the same weight, or, okay.
Well, no, not the same weight, but the exact same bow. You can change the weight between how strong you are, I guess.
Okay, that's what I was wondering there, different.
But what about the distance? You know, like when I go to the golf course, I go to, you know, the shorter one. I go to the closer tee box.
Yeah.
Um, is it the same?
Um, for most of it, yes. But for youth, it's five and 10 meters.
Okay.
For us, it's 10 and 15.
Okay. Well, I just want you to know that we had a long conversation, actually, at dinner tonight about you. Because my one daughter's like, "Archery is for boys." And I said, "Well, just so you know, not so much for boys anymore." So congratulations.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Is your, do you have a target downstairs in your basement? Like, I know some people that do.
Yep, I do.
And you go out, I'm sure, to outside ranges as well, correct?
Uh, yeah, there's an outside range across from the high school, kind of by, like, the Mount Trojan over there. We go there sometimes during the summer to practice.
And I just wanted to ask how long you've been in archery or been practicing this sport?
Practicing this sport since I was, like, young. But to get into, like, the program that we have, this will be my fifth year.
Good for you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you a bow hunter also?
I am, yes. Yep.
And one thing to know, I mean, archery is a growing sport in the state of Minnesota. New Prague here, don't we have about 70 kids in the program?
A lot more than that.
A lot more than that even?
Oh, yeah.
Between K through 12, we have a, we have 200?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, 200, all right.
It just keeps growing every year.
That's awesome.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That is great. Is it because of the Hunger Games?
Doesn't hurt it.
Well, great. Well, congratulations. We'd like to congratulate you, so we'll come forward and shake your hand.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, also tonight, we have a, a member of our trap shooting team, Ben Dietz, who will be a junior this upcoming year. Ben was our trap shooting team individually and team-wise, had a very successful year. Ben was second in the state for the regular season. Team-wise, we finished first in, had our first ever Class 5A state championship, and then went on to place fourth in the Minnesota State High School League Tournament. So did very well. And again, had a couple of questions that I thought he might, might have that Ben and I talked about. First off, tell him, Ben, where is it that we practice?
I practice at the Horse and Hunt Club in Prairie Lake, but I also travel around everywhere. I've been to seven different states this summer so far.
Okay, and then how long have you been involved in trap shooting?
I've been involved three years now, and so, ever since I was 14.
Wow. Well, actually, Kelly, I'm glad you stayed. Can you come up here? I have a question for both of you, because after I shook your hand, I thought of the question. So how did the two of you get involved in archery and trap shooting? Who, you, you said that you got involved in it ever since you were really young. So obviously, there's someone who mentored you into that program. So who was that that impacted you? And Ben, how did you get involved in it at age 14? Were you watching someone? Was there someone who impacted you, you know, during this time?
Well, actually, my dad used to shoot a lot as a kid. And he just had me try it one day, and I was hooked.
The same with me. My dad is a bow hunter, and he brought it up by himself when he was at a younger age, but not, like, quite as young as me.
So we should blame dads for these, getting our kids hooked on these things. Great, I love it. Good, well, thank you. Um, so Ben, how you practice? You practice all over. You've gone to seven states. How do you, how do you decide where you're going to go and how you're going to do it?
Well, I shoot ATA, which is Amateur Trap Shooters Association, in the summer. And to make the All-American team, you have to travel around and shoot against other kids to get All-American points. So I've been just traveling around, shooting good and getting All-American points, so.
Good for you. Wow.
Do you guys have a favorite hunting season, or what is your favorite hunting? Any particular deer?
Ducks.
Deer, okay, okay. Are they the most difficult, or?
Ducks, duck hunting's harder.
Okay.
But deer hunting might be a little tough, too, with a bow and arrow.
Kelly, I have a question for you. Hope I don't embarrass you. So if you were hypothetically going on a date, would you take them to the shooting range?
Probably not.
To the driving range? Say, "I got an idea for tonight."
Probably not, because I don't want to make them feel bad.
Okay, Ben, so would you take your first date out to the trap shooting range?
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, probably not.
Because you don't want her to show you up, right?
Yeah.
I'm just kidding. Well, good. Well, we would like to congratulate you also. So if you'd just give us a minute, we'll be right around. Okay, moving on. Do we have? Oh, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any additions or subtractions, Mr. Ditburner?
Uh, no.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes, 7-0. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I do have a couple of comments before we vote on it. Number one, I noticed that Mrs. Kanoki and Mrs. Nash are retiring, and they've certainly given a lot to the school, and they will be missed. And good luck to them, and hopefully, they will stay healthy and safe and have a lot of fun in retirement. And then the second point is, I will have to abstain on this vote because one of my relatives is involved in one of the motions.
Okay. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 6-0 with one abstain. Policy committee.
We did have a special meeting this month, and that will be a separate agenda item.
Okay. Denny, Southwest Metro Co-op?
We had our second month off for the meetings, and we'll resume our meetings in August. And no news is good news, right?
I like it. Don and Cherry, Community Ed?
Uh, we kind of wrapped up the program, and the summer is, is ending now. And the summer is really, a lot of, a lot of people signed up for them, so. Mainly, another question that we get a lot, and I've talked to Mr. Ditburner about this. If anybody has some good ideas besides Mr. Ditburner, we have people complaining about not being able to drop off their elderly at the football field and at the high school for events. And that our last graduation was well attended, and there were lots of people that wished that we would come up with some easier way to have the elderly. And I'm sure it's a problem that's going to continue for several years.
And we've talked about it, so.
Maybe we could bring it up at the workshop.
Good, good. All right. Mr. Ditburner, we will have some updates and great news.
That's right. Well, first of all, I'd like to just introduce to everybody and anyone watching our replacement for Margaret Steika, who obviously worked in our district for 35 years. And if I missed, we got Janelle Sass is our new administrative assistant in the district office. So we welcome her, so I think that's good news. The other thing is, we have a professional learning community satellite conference that's coming up in a week. And we've got approximately about 210 teachers signed up for it. 160 of our own teachers, and we've got about 50 teachers coming from other school districts, such as Glencoe Silver Lake, Jordan, Tri-City United. I'm going to forget a few here, but we've got a wide range, and we're really excited about that. And I know Tony Boothy has, has led the charge in that and has done a great job getting that ready. So that'll be, we're really looking forward to that, and it's on August 4th and 5th. As far as updates, first thing I'm going to do is, I guess I'm going to go through an end-of-year report, and then we'll talk about the stadium, and then I'm going to talk about technology. First thing, just looking back at the year, and normally, I think I'd like to rather do this at the end of June, but the timing didn't work for all this. But security, that was an issue that, of course, I heard quite a bit about, and some things happened the previous year. And some things that have taken place this year and that I think the public needs to know and the school board needs to be committed for supporting these endeavors was do an external security audit. We brought someone in from the outside to really take a look at all of our buildings and see what was safe and what needed improvement. And then we made changes to that, to our buildings, to make them safer, whether it was the buzzer system or investing in more video cameras around the school, within the school, or externally. And then finally putting together an emergency operations plan, really fine tuning that and using it as a training manual. So security was one area. As we look back and reflect on the year, improvements made on the facilities. We made a commitment to improve the sound systems at both the high school and middle school auditoriums. Obviously, the Trojan Stadium construction is going on right now and is taking a lot of our time and focus right now to get that done right. A lot of planning to be done. I know Brad Skogarbo and Craig Most are working hard on that. And like I said, I'll be talking about that shortly. And then our long-term facility study, which was, began this past spring by having demographic study that was done, report. We're doing a facility analysis right now by World Architects that will be probably done by our, our August board meeting. And then we'll be having our six meetings. So the committee, we'll have about 25 people on the committee. That's what it ended up in. I'll be sending information out, a letter out to those people that are serving, as well as letting you know who will be on that at the end of this week. Another area of focus was the technology. And after doing over a year's studying of doing some research and what we should be doing, we're going to go full-time into a digital learning environment where we're going to be getting, it's a three-year implementation, implementation plan with the first year coming up here, just in a few weeks, with Google Chromebooks on a one-to-one for our high school students in grades nine through 12. We also have invested a lot in infrastructure improvements. We've upgraded our wireless access points. We've upgraded bandwidth. In fact, our bandwidth has gone from 100 megabytes to one gigabyte. And then we've also, this year, going to have Wi-Fi access on our buses. So we've made a lot of changes in technology, so we're really excited about that. And human resources and finance, obviously. This past year was many hours, Sandy Lynn, working together with her and getting all the negotiations for the groups. And we think it was a fair process, and I think everyone involved were pleased with the results there. We also had bond refunding resulting in $200,000 in savings to our taxpayers. And this year, this past year, is the first year of doing the state-mandated principal evaluation process. Co-curricular activities, a lot of things going on there. But I think one thing I'm proud of, and very, again, it comes to our leadership and support from the school board, is to do that middle school activity bus, which has been very successful for a first year. And we're going to continue doing that. And then also adding robotics and summer marching band to our list of co-curricular activities. We had students here that are in club sports from trap shooting and archery, but the more kids we can get involved in activities, co-curricular activities, after-school activities, the more well-rounded, the better our school and community are going to be. Communication marking, this was basically a new area, but this is an area I think we've got to continue to have more focus and emphasis. Janelle Kirsch will be presenting to you on our new website in a little bit here. But that was something that came out four years ago in the strategic plan and the survey. If you remember, that was one of our lowest-rated areas. And it took four years, but we've got it up and running now, and it's, it's only going to get better as we go here. The other thing is use of social media. Many of our information items now go on Twitter and Facebook, and, and that has been a tool, I think, that's helped improve communication. And I know people that use that are happy about that. District information brochure, we had Marla Mayer put that together, and that's been, again, another real positive thing about really telling our story and letting people know about the things going on in our district, the great things going on. And then again, changing our logo, or really updating our logo, making sure that we have our own distinct logo, whether it's the NP or the, or the Trojan Head, or just the tagline, "Proud, Proud Tradition, Promising Future." And just having that consistent systematic message throughout our community and school district, I think, is important. Educational services, things that have been reported to you that you've voted on and acted on is our strategic plan, something that it's not going to be a folder stuck on our bookshelves and never looked at. There'll be a, a working document that provides us direction as we try to achieve all the goals that we want to accomplish. I think the school board this past year, supporting the kindergarten choice process, I think that went very well. I'm very proud of the feedback that we've got, that we're able to, you know, meet the needs of all of our parents and students in kindergarten so that we have that choice out at Eagleview Elementary for every other day. I think we're at 17 or 18 students there, and still be able to provide all-day, everyday kindergarten for everyone else that chooses that. So that was a very positive thing. The teacher evaluation process that Tony presented to you last month and that you adopted was a year-long work there in progress, where there's a lot of meetings and a lot of collaboration, along with adopting our World's Best Workforce, another thing that we acted on. And Tony will be presenting the district survey today, so you really get that feedback and where we're at. And like I mentioned early, earlier, the PLC Institute that we're going to have next week, along with providing staff development in the summer. We offered classes in June with, using our own people as, as the teachers, and we'll do that again in August. And I think that's, for get that professional development done in the summer when we have time to reflect and really have time to improve as educators is very important. And finally, I would just end with points of pride. Our preschool program receiving a four-star rating. I think that was great news at the beginning of the year here. A state report coming out that New Prague Area Schools is on track to closing the achievement gap. There's only 39% of the schools in Minnesota that are on track right now. Schooldigger.com, that is the, probably the num, real, number-one real estate site in the nation. And we ranked 26 out of 382 school districts on state assessment results. That's something to be proud of. New Prague Middle School being recognized as a model PLC by Solution Tree. Five athletic teams and one fine arts team making state tournament appearances. Adaptive floor hockey team winning the state championship. And the state report, 94% graduation rate from our class of 2013, considering that the state average is 79%. I think that says something. And then, of course, the awards that our elementary schools received this past year for being in the top 15% on state testing. And for Eagleview and Falcon Ridge and Raven Stream, being celebration schools for being in the top 25%. So just a reflection, you can see the number of things that were done this past year. It was done because of your leadership, and then also the, the support staff, the administration, our principals, and obviously our teachers, doing, everyone working together to accomplish great things. So something to be very proud of, and something I think it's important for us right now just to take a look at and, and reflect on and, and know what was accomplished. So just wanted to share that tonight. The other update I want to give right now is on the stadium. They had a meeting today, and Craig Most spoke with him. They've, the field, the base of the field, the, the rock, the sand, everything should be all done by next week. The synthetic turf. The synthetic turf should be, start being put in place by the middle to the end of next week. Um, and, uh, obviously we're behind in the timeline. Um, I think, uh, there's a little frustration right now with the number of workers that Cobalt's providing right now for us to, to get this done, uh, when we are behind. Got behind because of the rain, but, uh, we're still optimistic. Um, we're gonna get this done and it might be towards the middle or later in August when it gets done, but, uh, we wanna make sure it gets done right and, uh, but that's where we're at right now with the stadium. Uh, I just wanna give you just a quick update on technology because, uh, we've got, uh, on the website, parents registering, uh, right now, paying their $25 fee, their insurance fee right now, user fee I should say, and, uh, we'll be handing out Chromebooks in a few weeks here, but I asked Tony Boothey, who's been involved with, uh, this process,[656.94]
Worth of items, so, and that's just with one distributor. Um, all of the distributors that we currently are using are part of this program. So I think that that would also enhance our ability because Indian Head, the one that I did the analysis on, um, doesn't carry all of the products that are part of this program. But because Cisco and the other distribution companies are, then we would be open to using some of these products. I also know there's products on this list that we haven't used in the past at the school, um, because of cost in talking with all of the different, um, line and team leaders at the various schools. They've said, "Well, we haven't purchased these items because of cost." You know, "We just didn't think they could fit into our menu." And a lot of these savings can be anywhere from five up to ten or fifteen dollars a case. So, um, in order to do this, though, we do need to sign a joint, um, purchasing agreement along with the Anoka Hennepin schools. So that's why I just wanted to mention it to you guys. Um, you could take a look at the agreement and see if you thought it was something that you would like to move forward with, and I can get you more information.
Can you join any time of the year, or does it have to be done before the school year starts?
No, you're allowed to join any time of the year.
So, do you think you would have enough information for us so that we could discuss it at our works, at our workshop on the 11th? And then we could make a decision at our, the, and I, the August, I can't think of the August.
Fifth.
The August 25th meeting. Then we could make a decision then and vote on it that day?
Yep, I think so. I mean, I can certainly forward the information that I have. I can do a little more cost analysis if it's something, you know, you think you're interested. And I didn't do a lot, I had just proposed it to Sandy Lynn.
Well, if on one item, you're able to save three thousand dollars and it's going to cost us at a maximum eight hundred dollars to get in the program, that's still a cost savings to us, just on one item.
Right, well, and that's not one item, that's a group of items.
Okay, a group of items. But that's just a few select items, that's not looking at everything.
Yep.
So, and if we're able to broaden our food for our kids, because I know, you know, I have four children who eat the lunch, and so I hear it all the time, "Don't get rid of the cookies." It's the one thing I got told tonight, "Don't let them get rid of the cookies, Mom." And so, I, I would totally entertain, you know, the, I love the healthy eating, I totally support that. But I also like the idea of another alternative.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to afford, we could maybe afford some higher-end stuff and still not spend any more money, which would be good for their.
Right.
And if I read, it sounds like the students can sample some of it, or no?
Well.
Did I read that, that they're able, you're going to have taste testings?
We're hoping that that's something that, you know, I'll bring in with the distributors, that if there's products that we want to do, you know, we're going to do that, or try and bring in chefs from the different distributors who will come in and do like, uh, sampling or a display during the lunch period, so they can try an item before we would actually put it on the menu to see whether it's going to end up in the trash, or if they're going to end up eating it.
Well, I know one of the things that, um, and I know we can't do this probably at all the schools, but I'd like to see it at the high school, is the little, I call them to-go cups of hummus and the little carrots, pack of carrots that come with.
Yep.
That's a healthy, that's something healthy. And you know what? There's a lot of times where you don't need a big, heavy carb meal, you just need something. And a hummus and carrots, that's a great combination. It's, it's good, it's healthy, and it's, it'll fill them up. And I know a lot of girls eat hummus, I know a lot of guys don't like hummus, they're like, "Yuck," but you know what? It's good, try it, it's good for you.
Right, yeah, and there have been some recipes that I've given to the team leaders. Um, we just have to look at what equipment we have available to be able to make, if we were to make our own hummus and stuff like that.
Well, I'm just thinking if you can buy those cases, you know, if they're economical, of course, but.
Do you know why boys don't like, uh, hummus?
Why?
It's made out of chickpeas.
That means they should love it.
Yeah, I feel right all the more. I just have a question too. Okay, got off that thought. Oh, a couple of things I heard last year from the high school is the soup was not there. Am I right about that last year? I know the year before it was. Okay, so I'm correct in that saying?
They didn't have it?
They did not, and I think it was greatly missed.
Okay.
I don't know why, but I think it was greatly missed, from what I hear, driving people to and from school.
Anything else on food?
I just think it's something we should look at, definitely those cost savings.
Did you say how many districts are in it currently in this program?
Um, there are over a hundred that have joined. I have a little map that kind of shows, which, it'll be difficult for you guys, probably, because it's fairly small. But it's, most of them are based in central Minnesota. I mean, if you can kind of see, that's the state of Minnesota. Most of them are within the central area, but they are kind of expanding now and going, you know, the out-of-state area. But most of the distributors are jumping on board with this.
You mentioned Anoka Hennepin, they're, they're the leader in this? Must be the leader, and everybody just signs on with them, is that, okay?
Yep. Yeah, it started in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. There were fifteen districts who started this program, and now it's built, you know, in the last seven years to over a hundred.
Great, anything else?
Nope.
Great, thank you, and it's nice to meet you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good to meet you too.
District survey.
Well, part of, uh, we'll be doing an annual survey every year. And, uh, we did one this past spring, and Tony's going to share the results, uh, with you tonight.
As, uh, Mr. Dipburner had said, we have a district survey that was sent out approximately eleven hundred plus of family groups. And what I'd like to do tonight is to share with you about seven to eight slides, uh, which is basically all of the information that was collected. I won't be able to read through every specific question, it's on here. We will put this PowerPoint on the district website, Twitter, and Facebook tomorrow morning. So that would be available to, uh, everyone as they would like to see. Slide number one is, "My Child Is In," basically shows where all of the survey responses came from. From preschool to kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth, sixth through eighth, and of course, ninth through twelve. We had a well over fifty percent of our families, uh, did reply, uh, to the survey. So I think for the first time since two thousand and ten of completing a district survey, that's pretty good. Some of the questions here, as I said before, I won't read through every specific question. However, slide two has to do with probably some of our larger groups or programs. Safety, food service, transportation, community education, and superintendent communication. If you really can focus, if, as we look at these, if you look down the left two columns, strongly agree and agree, that means if those numbers are fairly high, that people are happy with the question. If you look at the disagree and strongly disagree, that probably gives you an idea if there's a higher number there, that maybe we have some areas that we need to work on. The second question was something Mr. Dipburner already talked about, and that was the safety of our children. And I'd like to just point out, if you look under disagree and strongly disagree, nineteen, um, responses there. That's an area that our school district, I believe, has done a wonderful job in. And I'll try and not comment specifically on those, because we'll finish with that at the end. Food services next, transportation services, and then also community education. So again, those on this slide were highlights. We wanted to get a real good feel from our, our parents about our entire school district. Slide three, uh, very high ratings. And this has to do with the well-being of our students, our school, and our involvement, um, involvement as a school with their students. Disciplinary piece is also in here. Uh, respect of our students, and then just overall satisfaction from our parents with the involvement uh, that we have with their kids. Very high ratings, as you can see, and strongly agree and agree, uh, very high ratings for the district. If anybody has a question, you can definitely please, please ask. The next slide has to do with communication. And even though, um, even though we have a very high overall rating, I think, on both, on these questions, I did want to just point out that communication is, uh, one of the three prongs of our district's strategic plan. So we will continue to keep working on that, and again, Mr. Dipburner talked about that already tonight. Communication is something that we continue to meet as administrative staff and with all of our leadership teams, making certain we can get all of our information out to the parents, and also hear from the parents, I think is, uh, the main, um, piece that we want to let our, our parents also know, that we're always listening. A lot of those questions have to do with how approachable teachers, administrators, coaches, uh, are within the schools, and as they walk into our offices, uh, do they feel welcomed? And that is a, we're in the, the business of service, and we want to make sure that we, we know how they feel. The next slide has to do with our day-to-day educational experience for our students while they are at school. Some of the highlighted areas would be our environment. Uh, I believe this speaks volumes for our schools, teachers, drivers, food service, custodian. They feel, uh, their experience has been very positive. Uh, it's a very supporting learning environment within the schools. The use of technology, uh, came out very high, and that's exciting even as we're now venturing into one-to-one powerful learning. Uh, we've been doing things right over the past years, um, maybe when it wasn't even a huge focus. Of course, it is now. And, uh, one that I really look at as a twenty-year teacher, the teachers care about my child's success. You know, we have approximately fifty people that disagree or strongly disagree, you know, and those are things as teachers, administrators, we would always encourage those, those people to contact the, the right people to talk about those things, if there's something we can do better, uh, as a school environment to help their children. Because that is the number one goal of all of our, all of our staff, is to make that a, a, a good thing. Jerry?
Did they make any comments as to why? Was there any, uh, written comment as to why they disagreed? Did you receive any feedback there to help you out?
There, there were specific comments in some areas here, I do not have those, unless Mr. Dipburner remembers anything specifically. I did not write any of those things down right now. But each one of those comments were read over by Mr. Dipburner, myself, other staff, and, uh, the feedback is given out to all of our administration, so they know exactly, uh, what was said about their school, um, their programs, and their people. Slide six is just a little bit of a review, uh, in some of the areas that I, I think are, are very important. Uh, "My child's school is clean and well-maintained." You know, and a lot of people may think, "Well, yeah, what's, you know, the big deal about that?" But, you know, we are in an area where there's, of course, open enrollment, and you have a lot of people that are visiting your schools, uh, visiting your city. Um, we have a lot of outside agencies and organizations utilize our schools on a daily basis. And Craig Most and the entire buildings and ground staff, with all the custodians, do a wonderful job of keeping our buildings clean, such as the C E C here. You know, even though it's an older building, it's in very good shape. "My child feels very safe at school." Again, sixteen people out of well over six hundred people, uh, believe, you know, um, that, uh, maybe there's something that, uh, could be done better. However, an overwhelming amount of people truly feel that their children are safe in the New Prague schools. And then the last one, "My child feels comfortable speaking to school staff about concerns." Slide number seven, and I think the, the biggest thing, uh, with this first question is, "I am satisfied with the guidance my child receives concerning what to do after graduation." This is an area of, of concern for us that, uh, we're already working on as a district administration and Mr. Seifert. Um, and this was one area that will be a highlight area for us over the next, um, school year and, and the continued school years. Um, so I wanted to point that out. The next four questions have to do with fine arts, clubs, activities, athletics, um, the involvement of kids in post-secondary, uh, areas, and those all came out, again, at a very nice, high rate. So we're doing something right in those, uh, in those areas, and you met a couple of the New Prague's finest in the archery and, and, uh, shooting.
Antonio, I'd like to also point out on that one, if I go back to the strategic plan, the one area where we're, according to the survey, where we're faring better than athletics is fine arts now. Fine arts came across four years ago in that survey, that there was something that we needed to beef up and, and start adding more, uh, resources and more activities in that area. As you can see there, that actually rated higher than, uh, athletics now. So that's a big change in four years, I'm just going to tell you.
And the last slide is, "Overall, I am satisfied with my child's school." Approximately ninety-six percent of all people who completed the survey, ninety-six percent believe that they are, they agree or strongly agree that they are satisfied with their children's school. So I think I can speak on behalf of the entire administration. U S. The Board should feel very proud, um, to be leading a district that, uh, the families, you know, have the, the faith in the school district and what is actually going on within the schools, and Superintendent Dipburner and everybody working for those. So, you know, anything that we can do to make our schools better. This will be an annual survey, I did highlight just a couple of areas. This, this was sent out this spring, we will send it out every year, um, at approximately June first, right at the end of the school year. As I said, we had over six hundred and fifty responses recorded out of eleven hundred that were sent out. Areas of improvement were also identified, and here are the three areas I just wanted to highlight of the highest satisfaction. "My child feels safe at school." Ninety-seven point four-five percent of the parents strongly agree or disagree. I will not read through these here, Mr. Dipburner already did that. "The environment at my child's school supports learning," ninety-six point eight-one percent. I did write a few things in here, "Because of responsive classrooms," which are programs that many of our elementaries have used for the last few years. "Positive behavior support instruction." "Pride group at the high school," to name just a few of the very proactive programs that we have going on within our schools, I believe is one of the reasons, uh, that the environment at our, all of our schools is very, very high. I do believe we're going to touch on bowling here in just a minute. And then "The education offered to students at our school is of high quality." Ninety-five percent of all people, uh, believe in that, and both administration and teachers pride themselves on doing the very best they can for all of New Prague. Opportunities for us to improve on, and I did put two areas. Um, "The guidance for students concerning what to do after graduation came back, uh, as an area that we need to look at." Career exploration, starting with students in the eighth grade, uh, has happened and will continue to happen. Uh, "The PLAN test, uh, helps prepare, prepare students for the A C T." Uh, "We're going to build a partnership," or "Working on partnership with two- and four-year colleges to provide more college credit at New Prague High School," and, uh, "Also provide post-secondary planning guidance to juniors and seniors." Uh, and Tim, would this be an opportunity to talk about the, the new career counselor person also?
The, the new career, uh, counselor, well, we're looking at, Lonny's putting that person in the media center. We'll have a, a career center right there, and, uh, this person's focus will be on that. I mean, all those things that are on there, that person will be in charge of. So, um, you know what? You, you get the information, you get data, you've got to react to it. And, uh, Lonny's gone ahead and, uh, U S. The Board has approved the, the hiring of this person, and, and I think it's a step in the right direction. So, you know, there's things you're going to get rated low at, and, and we, it's no fault of anyone. We just got to be able to act in the right, right way and, and make things better, so.
And then the last one, we already have had Stephanie up here talking about the healthy meal choices for students, and that was an area where some of our numbers were a little bit lower, and she's already addressed that. So that, uh, you know, I for one am kind of looking forward to that sampling piece a little bit, so. Stephanie, if kids aren't available, I'm more than happy to help out.
Uh, and I will say on this, it's, you know, part of it's those new federal guidelines. It's made, it, the game has changed, and, uh, so you're going to have to get creative. And what Stephanie's just brought you tonight is one way to go about it, and there's, there's a number of different ways. So that's, you know, those are, like you said, two areas. I will want to comment, I do want to go back and just comment on all the survey questions. I know, uh, Tony talked about who strongly disagreed or disagreed in the numbers there. Every, every statement, except for those two that he just showed you, areas of improvement, everything was over ninety percent agreed or strongly agreed. Anyway, range from ninety percent to, I think, ninety-nine percent. Uh, the clean and well-maintained schools was the highest one. So ninety to ninety percent almost on every one of those statements. So that's, I think that says a lot. Uh, it sets the bar pretty high for our baseline data here. Uh, so we only can go down, no, we can still go up, but, uh, it's still good, good feedback. Um, and, uh, we'll just, you know, move on and try to get better.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
So, website update?
Yep, I asked Janelle Kirsch, our Director of Community Services. She's been the point person the whole way since, uh, when I took the position and hired her. About a month later, I'm in her office, and I, "Do you think you could, uh, I see in the strategic plan, this is rated pretty low by her parents, I think you can do something about this, get a new website up by December?" Pretty naive, I guess, but, uh, it's been a long process, a lot of collaboration, and, and working as a team. Uh, and she'll talk about that, but we've got the new website out now, and she's going to talk about that. There's a number of things we need to get updated there, but it looks, I think we're headed in the right direction. So, go ahead, Janelle.
Well, um, it's, it's good to be here. I was, um, wondering for a while if we were going to make it here or not, but, um, we are, and the website is up and it's running. Um, first of all, I guess I'd like to just mention the people that were on my committee, because I had an amazing group of people to work with, um, and we still are working on it. But, um, I'd like to mention, um, Bob Bell, Sean Brandt, Sandy Lynn, Marla Mayer, Lana Puffer, Julie Schmitz, and then, um, after she was hired, we got Laura Stever to join us also. And, um, we have been meeting very regularly and, um, putting a lot of time and energy and effort into this website, and we're really proud of what we've got. As Tim said, after a lot of months of researching and planning and gathering information, um, we came up with a vision of what we wanted the website to look like. It is live right now, it's got a lot of great features, and, um, I just kind of want to run through a few of them with you. Um, Tim asked me to kind of keep it brief, I could probably talk a very long time about what's here. But, um, I would encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to look at it when you get home tonight, just to take a, a little time and just peruse through it and just check it out. But, um, what we wanted to do, our goal was to just make it real fresh-looking, clean, easy to navigate, and, um, we feel like we accomplished that goal. If you look at the website, we've got, um, the little icons on the top here, which are, um, are quick links to things that parents, students, the community, and staff would be most interested in, in getting the information on. So, um, they are still kind of a work in process. We don't have all of the links set up yet, but the staff one is a good example. Um, in this, we've got all of the staff resources that were on our old page that, as our staff is getting ready to come back to school, or, you know, when they get here at the, their summer hours here, um, everything that they need is right here and easy to get to. Including there is our logos and graphics standards, so, um, those are password-protected, but staff can go in and pull off the logos that they need to use for any, um, correspondence that they might be doing. Um, and there also are the numbers for the colors, so we can always have the right Trojan red and, um, the right Trojan black. Um, we have, under the district area, we have just, uh, a nice arrangement of things that people might be interested in. Uh, the facility use is a, a good one there, it shows how to get to our facilities, all of the information that people would need in order to use our facility. And just, uh, a whole variety of things there. The schools, we've got all the schools in the district, including the preschool and the Alternative Learning Center there. As you look at this, one of the goals in our, putting this out as a soft launch, which means that it's working constantly here, is to get as much information out as we can, but know that it's not complete yet, and we'll be working on it. Our goal is to have most things up and ready to go by, um, the start of the school year. But if you look at, like, the middle school site here, um, all of the schools have the little welcome page. Um, and then you'll get a, a drop-down menu of all of the other things that are on it. And so, um, the, the middle school one is really quite, um, comprehensive already. It's got a lot of their information on, they've done a nice job of, of pulling that together. The other thing I guess I should mention is that we do have somebody in each of the schools and most of the departments who's trained to work on the website and keep it up to date. And that was kind of.
It's the school's responsibility for their page, then, someone in the school?
Yes, yes, so like in this case, the middle school put on their information. The, the goal is that, you know, they will keep it up to date and make sure that the information there is pertinent to, um, what's happening in, in the program at the time. We have our enrollment areas, so that parents can go there quickly if they're looking to enroll their children in the district. Um, new, new families, transferring families, um, children entering kindergarten, a real easy way for them to go in and find the information that they need. We've got the school board page, so, um, that is real handy for you guys and for, um, anybody that wants to see what's been happening. And of course, we do have the nice little picture of the board here, so.
And it's the good picture.
It is, it's a great picture.
Ready for a new picture in August.
You, Tony, you want to bring a little smile to your face? You can just pop on there and I'll get it.
I do, because I don't like the one on Board Docs, but I'll worry them all out later.
Well, then, we did a good job, I guess.
You did a good job.
Um, our departments here, we do have something for all of the departments in our program here. The Activities Department is probably one of the more unique ones in that we just linked it up to their current page, we did not move all of their information over. But, um, the rest of the departments are filled more with, um, links and other kinds of information. One of the things that we tried really hard to do is to have the information available in numerous places so that people can find it easily. And that's one of the things that, really with the, the, um, food service area, we've got that in a lot of different categories. So under the parents and students and the quick links, they're there. Under each school, we have it, in the departments, we have it. So it'll be really easy for people to find, you know, what the lunch menus are, um, how to pay their lunch accounts, things like that. And the community education one, we did just link that also to the community education website that we revised a year ago. Um, one of the goals that we have is to move that information over onto the new website, but, um, that's not a high priority right now. This works really well for, for right now. Um, and then we've got, um, contact information, which is, uh, more than just a staff directory. It shows, you know, what are. you know, what our hours are, it gives us a nice little map to get to the schools, which I think will be great for people from out of the district, as well as people in the district that really have no idea where some schools are, and other kinds of contacts that people might need. Nice little thing about it is you can always get back to the homepage by clicking the little NP up there. We were pleased with the way it looks as it just kind of pops up to you, but then if you scroll down a little bit, we've got our news stories. And originally, we were thinking of just having three news stories up at a time, but as we got going, we thought it might be better to have a scrolling news story section so that we could have numerous stories and people could scroll through and find what they like. So that's why we decided to do that. And then as we get a little bit further down, the dedicated to high levels of education, that will become a little bit more of a welcome area there, we're just not quite at that point yet. And then the calendar, the Google Calendar updates was a big thing for us as a group to have available on the front webpage, as well as on the individual school webpages. And then once again, we've got the quick links and other kinds of contact information, and then because our social media is a huge thing right now, we wanted to make it very easy for parents and community people to access our social media, and so we've got that right there. We did go with Voyager Web this time, which is the same group as we went with last time. They were awesome to work with, they were very, very willing to listen to what our thoughts and concerns were, and to make adjustments to whatever we needed, and they are continuing to make adjustments for us as we go along and find little glitches along the way. I guess that's kind of it in a nutshell. If anybody has any questions for me, I'd love to field them.
If we have any comments on it, should we send them to you, or?
Yep, that would be great. The other, the little search area here is really a nice feature for the program. One of the things that we did also do is we were concerned about staff, making sure that they would know how to go in and create their teacher pages, or how to log in, and things like that. So one of the things that they can do is go in and search, like, instructions. If you go in to do that, it comes up with a real nice, oh, well, it's password-protected. But it comes up with a really nice little YouTube video that you can go into, and it'll show you how to do anything that you want. So the YouTube videos are really a nice little feature there also. One of the concerns that we had is we rolled this out because it was a soft rollout, and we knew that it wasn't going to be totally complete, was that we wanted to make sure that there's something on every page, so even though some of the pages might not be finished yet, because some of the staff that are working on it are not working during the summer, we do have little notices saying "coming soon," so that they know something will be here, it's just not there yet. And then the teachers, to get their websites up, we've given them a year to move their teacher websites, webpages over to the new site, and until they get to that point, we will be linking up to their old teacher pages. So all of that should be on there, and good for parents to find the information they need. Any other questions?
Very nice.
Very nice, yeah, very nice improvement.
Thank you. One of the nice features about this also, though, is that we wanted to make sure that it was easily viewed in any type of device that you'd use, so you can easily see things on a smartphone, as well as a full-size computer screen.
And everything fits in the correct boundaries now, I like that.
Yep, yep, not all that empty space.
This is a very complicated project, and Janelle, you did an excellent job. Very good.
It was, it was a learning experience.
I think, Don, you said it right. It was, it was, this is a big, big deal. It took, but what I like best about it, it's done right. It took a while-
Very clean-looking and easy to follow.
Yep, it'll be a change, and some people are going to have trouble just at the beginning, I know I had a little bit too, but it is, I think it's well-done, and it's one that we can always keep improving upon.
Yep.
You know, it's not, it isn't the final product.
Looks nice. Thank you. Love handbooks.
Yep, we've got ALC handbook, and Lonnie's here today, just going to say a few words here and see if you have any questions, but we've got the high school co-curricular activities handbook, the coaching handbook, and the middle school activities handbook up for, to act on for approval. Lonnie?
I'll speak first to the ALC handbook. Really, the only change is, they tried to clean it up, Lisa Decker is our lead teacher up there, she just tried to clean it up a little bit so that it was a little more consistent with the high school, yet realizing that it's a different environment and having some different things in it. So really, the only thing that she did change a little bit is, they are attempting, the clientele that they have, attendance is always an issue, so they are attempting to clean that up a little bit. It was, used to be, could not exceed six absences, now they're going to go down to five, and also working with the county a little bit more on truancy, and trying to come up with alternative plans for those students that are struggling to be there. The only other, the only other additions that she had were changes to their electronic device, they started to run into some issues. Trying to allow students to have their cellphones throughout the day got to be a problem, so they went to the same policy that we are using at the high school, where cellphones are only allowed in between classes and over lunch. They went to that mid-year and had some problems with it, in the fact that students didn't want to give it up. And so they've put some language in that failure to give it up will be grounds for removal for the remainder of the day, a form of insubordination. And then they did not have in, previously, they did not have in the weapons policy or the harassment and bully hazing policies, similar. We have modified versions in our handbook, they have added to modified versions that we have. And then the other change that they were making this year is, last year, we started busing them to the high school for their lunches, and they gave students the option that if they were not going to eat hot lunch, some of the issue was that students didn't want to go to the high school because they had been there. So they allowed some of those students that were not going to be eating hot lunch, or that did not want to go to the high school, they could stay back with a staff member. They are going to change that, all students will be required to go to the high school for their lunches. It just became a control issue as far as staffing and allowing staff to have their twenty-minute duty-free lunch because they really weren't getting it, because kids were staying back. And so those are really the only changes in that. Again, trying to be as consistent with the high school, and yet understanding it's a difference, it's a different setting, and you need to have probably just some different rules there, and allow probably a little more freedom. It does also include the seven-period day like the high school, only they're using some advisory, so their timeframes are just a little bit different, but it's still the concept of seven-period day, and they will not have study halls. Those kids need credits, they are not going to have study halls there. They just need to be earning credit. So, with the ALC, that handbook, that is it. And I think from Brad's standpoint, what I shared, what I told him I would share is in his Activities Handbook, really the only thing that changes, a couple of the changes are, instead of three conferences now, we have two. So the grade point checks, eligibility, will be done in November at midsemester, they will be done at the end of the semester of one, and then again at midsemester of two. So the number of eligibility checks goes from three for the tri, or the trimesters to two for the semesters. And then the other piece is, the Minnesota State High School League said you have to have a language in there for, there's a, it's a, when students participate in activities, they sign a code of conduct, saying that they will agree by to the laws and rules of my school, city, state. And so you can get a code of conduct violation if you're caught hazing somebody. It, you know, it's not, it's not a chemical violation, but it's a code of conduct, and the consequences for that are determined by the Activities Director and the Principal. State High School League says you have to have something in there for an appeal process, so that the student and parents have an actual appeal process. So we put language in there that they can appeal that to a committee, the high school principal, the assistant principal, and the Activities Director. Basically, what the High School League is asking, they at least get a chance to voice their concerns and their opinion, that can still come back to the same decision. You know, if you're going to suspend them for two contests, okay, we accept your appeal, but we are going to stick with our decision. So that was put in, and those are really the only changes Brad had in his handbook.
There an appeal process for the alcohol? There's not, there's not an appeal process for that one?
As long as, as long as we have either an admission by the student athlete or activities person, or a law enforcement documentation, because there are cases where they will be cited, and then for whatever reason, law enforcement, they work out some deal with them, but as long as we have that documentation, that's, we always tell the student athletes or the student activities people, that's a separate thing, there's the law piece of it, you're dealing with that, we still have our school pieces, so there is no appeal process, as long as you have an admission or a documentation from law enforcement saying that they were cited for this, then they suffer the consequences. Any other questions?
I don't have anything, thank you. So I will entertain a motion to approve the four handbooks, Coach Advisory Handbook, the High School Activities Handbook, the New Prague Middle School Athletic Handbook, and the ALC Handbook, as changes have been noted by Mr. Seifert.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven-zero. Bullying policy.
Okay, earlier this year, a new anti-bullying bill act went into legislation, and with the help of Mr. Boothie, Mr. Pribble, and Mr. Gregor, Jean and I met in our special meeting to, for purposes of looking at our current bullying bill, and just looking at the model, the MSBA model, which is the Minnesota School Board of Education, what we came up with, and actually with the help of Mr. Boothie, Mr. Gregor, and Mr. Pribble, is the policy that MSBA has, it's more of a clear definition now, it kind of more gives you a, you could say clearer definition, Mr. Boothie. And also, the changes which you will see are in red, I won't need to go through all of them because they are there. A lot of what is in the policy, of what we had in the district policy, we already, is already in place, is that correct, that you were saying? But what we did was, we wanted to make the language coincide with the MSBA model, so it kind of, it went side by side. We felt that that was something we wanted to do, and so a lot of what the, what we're already doing, Mr. Boothie pointed out, is it's focusing on training, we have student awareness already. If you want to add anything to that, please do.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the accepting of the MSBA policy is definitely the direction to go. There's a lot of media attention out there, this legislative session on the bullying policy, and I think what we as administration would definitely like our parents, community to know, is that we take this very seriously. Speaking on behalf of any of the principals, and when we were meeting with them to gather information, I did share a few of the proactive things that we were talking about earlier in the district survey, but how proactive our schools have been. And bullying and harassing is taken very, very seriously in the New Prague area schools, and it will continue to be. And I think the message that I would really like to relay tonight, on behalf of all of our administration, is the word proactive. We will be very proactive with our students, with our staff, and also the parents. We want to get the message out to all of our parents, and we will be writing an article, and actually, we've got it written, and we'll be looking at getting that on our district website. We may even talk to the New Prague Times about getting something out into the paper because of, again, of the media tension that surrounds this, this area this year. Being very proactive, all of our principals, at the start of the school year, will be meeting with student groups, with students, with staff. We really want to make sure our staff understands bullying and harassment, so if they see it happening, that they can help to stop it, to prevent it, be proactive, and that is all staff, that's not just teaching staff, that could be a custodian walking down the hall, a bus driver, those types of things. And then on November 7th, we have an actual attorney who kind of works in this area, we have him coming in for a staff development morning, and he will be addressing our entire teaching staff on the bullying and harassment and the new policy, just to make sure that we're all, you know, understanding of it and those types of things. So I think the biggest thing, the difference is the definition, they clearly define the definition of bullying, and I don't want to get into any specifics, but there is a difference between bullying and junior-high teasing, you know, and those are the things that our administration and teachers, they're professionals, and they, you know, will, they understand that difference, and what needs to be, you know, either more severely punished or just a good talking to, and, you know, don't do that again type of a thing. I think those were the main points that I did want to talk about, but the word proactive is what we would like everybody to know within our district, that's the direction that we're taking.
If there's an issue, are both sides, are the parents on both sides notified right away, the receiving side, or?
Yeah, most, most all the time, absolutely. Yes, and data privacy rules pertain, so sometimes we will get asked, you know, what happened to the other person, or, you know, and we can't share any of that, that data. Our administrators do the best they can to let parents know that both sides are being treated, you know, fairly and respectfully, and, but yes, good communication. And every principal, if you ask that question, Jerry, they'd all walk across here and say, we've been doing that, we'll continue to keep doing that.
Good, any further discussion? I will ask for a motion to accept the bully policy as it is written, with the changes that have been made by our policy committee and other members of the board, or of the school staff?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven-zero. St. Wentz's Cemetery lease.
Sandy Lynn is going to give us an update where we're at with that, and make a recommendation on the lease with St. Wentz.
Yes, I think you're all aware that the school district leases the parcel of property by the St. Wentz Cemetery by the middle school, and also the one across the street as well, across Columbus. And we have been paying five hundred dollars per year since we started leasing it a long, long time ago, and we met with the St. Wentz Cemetery Board and Peter over at St. Wentz, and came to an agreement that we would increase the amount we're paying for lease, it would go up to fifteen hundred dollars for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, and then up to twenty-five hundred, two thousand and the twenty-five hundred, no. and then up to twenty-five hundred, two thousand and the twenty-five hundred, no, $1,500, twenty thou- two thousand, twenty-five hundred and then three thousand. So it'll be a whole, a several year lease as opposed to a one year lease. And there's going to be some discussion. We do maintain the piece of property across Columbus and there is going to be some discussion later this year with St. Wentz on, on who should be caring for that property. We really don't use it very much. So we will be continuing discussions with them. Right now, we're just asking for approval for the lease.
Can the other side be used for anything? Is it too hilly or?
The only thing we can use it for, we use it for Nordic skiing, for like a one week or two week physical education unit, you know, and take them over there and go down the hill, but that's about all you can use it for.
Okay.
I think it's a good compromise, you know, with St. Wentz because they haven't raised their rates for quite some time. And we do utilize that property a lot for, for Fayette at the middle school.
Okay. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to accept the St. Wentz Cemetery Lease.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Marla, Marla Mayer, fiscal year fourteen, fifteen agreements.
Yes, as you're aware, that back in February of this year, we did enter into an agreement with Marla Mayer to provide communication consulting services to the district. She has been extremely valuable to the district. All the way, she was very instrumental in the website, also with the logo, creating a district brochure and really just has upped our game in the area of, of marketing and visibility for our district. There are still several projects that need to be completed and a couple of new ones that need to be done. So we'd like to continue that for this fiscal year with the same terms as last year. Some of the projects would be, you know, to complete that full implementation of the logo within the district. There's still a variety of areas that we need to implement that, that new logo and that new look. We have, the district brochure needs to be revised. We have a post-secondary brochure, which is actually, has been designed to, right, to promote our PSCE program. And we also have, have that annual report that we do every year. I think Tim would really like to make that a better marketing tool for the district as well and several other, you know, articles and communication efforts within the district. So we would like to be able to extend that this evening.
Any comments? Motion then to accept the Marla Mayer fiscal year fourteen, fifteen agreement?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. New Prague Education, Minnesota MOU.
The elementary schools, this before, in August before school starts, would like to conduct beginning of year student assessments before, for kindergarten through third, second grade. And that requires teachers to come in a couple of days before school starts, before the workshop starts. And this is probably a one-time event because in the future, we're going to be working this into, into the school calendar starting in fifteen, sixteen. But right now, we needed to try to find a way to pay these teachers for coming in. The amount of time each teacher may spend can be different depending on how many kids are in their class and so forth. So we worked with the union and came up with the idea of paying a stipend of $150 per day for the teachers that come in and do the assessments. It's not mandatory, but, you know, just paying them $150 per day. And they will take this out of their existing budgets, their carryover principal's account. It's that important to them. And then like I said, next year, this is only for this year. Next year, it should fix itself. But would like this MOU approved, Brian Triplet from the union has already approved it. And it's, the teachers are all for it too.
Is this going to be done with every student in K through two?
Yes.
Yeah, what they want to do is do the assessments before school. So with the first day, they can hit the ground running. Basically otherwise, they spend doing these assessments the first week or two and it just, it's hard to get the kid. It's just really difficult. So they'd like to, you know, get this done ahead of time and I think it's a positive thing and it's not raising, not, not increasing the budget. It's, they're just reprioritizing what they're doing with their budgets then.
Have the parents been notified of that yet?
I believe they're in the process of doing that right now.
There, a lot of them, I will say, I'll just take first grade at Raven Stream, they've been doing it just on their own. So there have been a lot just doing it on their own. What the principals want is more consistency between grade levels and between the schools. So it has been done, but it's been spotty by building in grade level.
Just, just if the parents are aware that there might be a time before school starts that they are going to need to have their child in.
I think they've got plans for the communication on that. I think it should go good. And even, you know, they're, you're not going to get a hundred percent, but at least, you know, if you get eighty to ninety percent of the kids, it really improves the, the teaching and learning that first week of school, first couple of weeks.
Good, good idea.
What does the MOU stand for?
Memorandum of Understanding.
Any further discussion? A motion to approve the MOU for the K through twelve elementary school student assessments for August of two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Substitute teachers.
Yes, the final item I have tonight is sub teacher pay. It's always a challenge to get enough substitute teachers in the district and so we don't have any empty spots to fill during the day. Tim had asked that we, actually it, it came about because a substitute teacher, a former teacher came in and talked with Tim and said, let's look at our substitute teacher pay. Excuse me. So I've looked at the neighboring district and basically we all basically pay $110 a day except for TCU, which pays $105 a day. Did some thinking and some checking. I know Tim had talked to someone in Richfield that does, takes a little different approach. And so I talked with that district and after talking with Tim, we decided we'd give it a, give it a try and see how it works. But we keep the standard substitute rate at $110 a day, no change with that. But each time a teacher works, a substitute teacher works twenty times, they would be eligible for a $110 bonus. So really, if they work twenty times, they're going to be making $115.50 a day. So really you're incentivizing these subs to work in our district more. And you're not increasing the pay across the board. You're just increasing the pay for those who sub regularly in the district. And there is something nice about, we could raise it to $115 a day, but that would raise it for everybody. But there's something nice about getting $110 in one chunk. There is, and I, when I was talking lady at Richfield, I mean, there is something to that. They like that. So we process payments twice a year. And so if they work forty different times, they would get $220 and so forth. Per the, per last year's records, there would have been twenty-five teachers that would have qualified for this and for a total of $3,200. And I think, like I said, I think it's good because you're not increasing pay across the board, but you're really rewarding the teachers that work a lot in our district.
Do long-term subs fall under this?
No, this is short call.
And how about the paras?
Paras have a different substitute rate. We're going to be reviewing the other substitute pay rates later, but we wanted to get the teachers done right now. It's a unique approach, you know, we'll try it and see, see how it works if you're okay with it and.
I, I, you know, when I heard about Richfield and then I asked Sandy to check into, I really, I think it's a good incentive for the ones that are really dedicated and committed to us. And it's a creative way to do it and.
It rewards people for being on, on the job willingly, yeah.
And they're on call, so they could be called, you know, with the understanding, it could be that same day, morning of, correct? So it's a non-call. I, I agree with the reward.
This might be the difference between going to Prior Lake or Bell Plain versus going, you know, coming here for a day. So we'll just, like I said, give it a shot.
Yeah, and the total cost, if you go to last year, $3,200. I think it's well, well spent.
Good. Okay, so we don't need, oh yeah, we do. We should probably have a.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to maintain a $110 with the $110 bonus for teachers that substitute twenty times or more.
I'll second.
Any further conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
It's a good idea.
Hey, that brings us to our last topic. In the past, the, the executive committee has met with the superintendent to go over the year or years of past work that he or she has done within the district. So a few months ago, I was meeting with Superintendent Dipburner and he asked me if we would be conducting a review of his first year. And as many of you know, that that is a key to our self-development is our reviews of our employers. So I said yes. And so in June, all of you and also eleven administrative staff received a survey and it was completed at a hundred percent. Filling it out, which was great. Kitten and myself met with Mr. Dipburner last Friday. And overall, the survey indicated high levels of satisfaction for Tim's first year of performance. And what we discussed on Friday was also saw, we saw here when Tony gave the overall district report. So the positives that you saw in that district report were also reflected here in his survey. So I just, as I'm sitting here, I'm like, wow, this is so awesome because we just had this conversation. So it was good. So anyhow, the scoring was pretty basic, zero to five with five being the highest. And overall, the survey came back with a 4.57 rating. And so I just want to go over a couple of the high and low points and I want Kitten to chime in anytime she wants. There was, it basically broke out into two sections. In section one, we scored the lowest overall with a 3.92. And the question was oversees all financial operations of the district and prepares, presents and recommends various budgets to the board. That was his lowest. And let me tell you.
The numbers were kind of, five was strongly agree, four was agree, three was neither agree or disagree and two was disagree, one was strongly disagree.
Right. And all the other ones were well above the 4.0 average. And so we received the tie of 4.71. Four explains the educational needs of the school district to the school board, indicating recommendations necessary for new and revised policies, staffing changes for the school board's action, which I know that we can all, whenever Tim has brought a change to the board regarding staffing, it's, it's not about the budget. He clearly talks how it's not going to affect the budget, but the great impact that it's going to have on the district overall. And I have, every time he has brought a recommendation to, to us, it's very clear. There's never been a question or hesitation. So I appreciate that. Assists and advises the board with negotiations, again, a 4.71. I think Tim did a great job. His first year, we threw him right to the wolves with the, with the contracts. Provides leadership for school board, educational programs, staff development programs and curriculum development programs. He scored a 4.74. And then he had some additional comments that were given. Kitten, you want to talk about those?
And these were comments from both the board and the administrative team that were filling it out. Terrific first year, outstanding job, very positive relationships, some minor first time on the job mistakes. Needs to work on knowledge for district finance, works well with various groups, very responsive to parent, staff, student concerns, good relationships within the communities. He listens and is open-minded, needs to work on response times or responses to some information. But, but overall, very, very highly rated by both administrative and the board.
The overall rating for just section one was a 4.499. Section two questions were again outstanding. The lowest, again, he received was a 4.32 and that is on thinking globally, which I just, I couldn't wrap my hands around that one, but it is what it is. I didn't quite understand the concept there, but that was the question. How does he think globally? And he got a 4.32 and that was his lowest. Establishes and maintains credibility, outstanding, 4.81. Is enthusiastic and positive overall, a 4.93. I don't think he can get closer to a five. And I mean, just great comments again. So Kitten, I'll give you those.
Some of the comments, Tim is a go-getter, most positive district culture and climate that this person has seen in a long time. He thinks outside the box, wonderful role model for all of his administrative team. He's a hard worker, visible in the communities. He puts students first and promotes them. He's outstanding to following through and getting things done.
His overall rating for section two was a 4.65. We continued our discussion, talking about goals, objectives, and we were all in agreement that these will be based off of the strategic, I'm sorry, the strategic plan, the financial integrity, communication and the academic goals. Superintendent Dipburner will discuss more of these in greater detail at our August 11th workshop so that we'll all have a broader understanding. So overall, it was a great review. I think we all learned a lot and I, it just, with Tony's survey over the district and this, it just proves to me once again that we have the best person in the right place. So congratulations.
I just want to say, I want to thank the board without the support of you and your leadership. I've told this to many people, well, within this district, but when I'm with superintendents or other administrators outside this district or places I used to teach and coach at, made it easy coming in to have an experienced board that knows what they want and it's what's best for kids along with the, the staff, whether it's support, district admin, principals, teachers and then community members. I can't be at a better spot. So I think I was lucky to be placed in a position where we had stability on a school board and stability overall in our staff and, you know, I just saw those two kids tonight. We got great kids. But the thing that we always have to keep in mind, that's forefront of my mind all the time, is that we are pretty good. I mean, we're going to, we are good, but we've, we can be better and we just can't be satisfied. And I guess that's what drives me every day, is that we can't be satisfied. Yeah, Tammy, I agree. The survey came back good. We, we've had other surveys that the, the principals did. Part of their evaluation came out very good, but we can be better. So we've got to keep setting that bar high and, and try to get better every day. But I want to thank all of you for your support.
I just want to add one little thing. It was just nice to hear this past year because, had it hurt otherwise, to have good comments and see the positive feel that the district has. And it's just, it's, it was just very welcoming and hear the nice comments from people from our public.
Talk about the district. So just before I ask for a motion to adjourn, it is Sept- or I'm sorry, it is Monday, August 11th, our workshop. And you will be sending an email regarding specific times, but it'll be a morning workshop for us that we all agreed to. So I will see you all then. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero.